All right, the time is six oh one P M. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. And welcome to the new council. This is the first full meeting that we'll have our new members here, and it's actually good to see a full five council members here. It's been a little while since we've had that. Just as a note to council, we do have two time certain items, so where we're at in the agenda, if we need to, we'll pause to go to those items. That includes item number four and item number seventeen. That's why we we kind of move things around a little bit to have the staff reports come before the six thirty item, so we could spend some time with staff if needed on their reports. So with that, we'll open it up for gen number two, which is public comments. Any members of the public that wish to speak at this time, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address. And we did not receive any comments in Open Gov or comment cards, just for council's notes. Seeing that we don't have any members of the public that wish to speak, we're going to move on to staff reports, and we'll begin with the administration report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm just going to highlight a few items. First, the city council retreat, we will be meeting. Council, the mayor, and some staff members will be meeting next Tuesday at the E O C. Hope you all received the email. Just waiting on, if you haven't already sent the top three priorities. If you have any questions about that, you can let the mayor or I know. We'll be posting that agenda on Friday. And we did change the time from nine A M. to four P M., so hopefully everyone is is okay with meeting. We extended it one hour just to give ourselves some additional time. Weather permitting, we're going to have a picnic lunch at the Uplands, so we can do a walkthrough of the Uplands property similar to the walkthrough that happened at Upper Kruger Creek. So yeah, so that'll be next week. And then other ongoing projects, so the zoning commission and the planning environmental committee had their first joint meeting last week. It went really well. We got through two articles of the comprehensive plan. The next scheduled meeting of the joint meeting of the zoning and P and E will be January twenty-fifth, so we'll have a nice break for the holidays, and then we'll resume in January. Let's see, what else? Oh, the Winter Solstice event is next Friday, December sixteenth, six to nine P M., so we hope that all the residents will come here to City Hall and enjoy all the festivities we have planned. There will be a fire dancer performance at seven? Seven thirty. The event is six to nine, but the fire dancers will be out here at seven thirty. There will be a planetarium inside City Hall in the council chambers. And we will also have an astronomer out in the field where you can actually look at through telescopes at stars, so fingers crossed. Weather permitting, and we'll have food and giveaways as well. And then one other item I wanted to highlight as far as planning and development, so the city approved a permit for Google Fiber for installation in the Meadows and the Villas. And we have learned from Google that they plan to begin the first week of January with installation, and that should take two weeks. So hopefully by the end of January, the Villas and Meadows will have Google Fiber, so. Good news. Any questions for the admin report?
So Matt, just like we've had some feedback from residents, just to make sure that we're we're making it very aware of, well aware, especially in the Villas of parking, you know, with regard to the installation that we're coordinating or Google is providing information about when they're going to be in the area, when we need to make sure that cars are, you know, off the one side of the street or the other. That seemed that was an important concern that was raised, you know, the last time that we got kind of close to installation.
Yes, I am going to make sure I have a a note. I have all the Google Teams like numbers and emails, and I'll also reach out kind of before Christmas just so that we're prepared. You know, because there's going to be the holidays, right? But we just want to make sure we get the information out to residents, so they know exactly when there might be some disturbances because of the the installation. So we'll make sure that to keep to keep residents informed.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the administration report?
Just a question on the Google Fiber. Are they doing the trenches, the trench along the road for insulation?
Correct. Micro trenching, council approved, devariance, I believe in twenty twenty-one to.
So it's going to be real important, anybody who parks in their driveways, you won't be able to get in and out of your driveway when they do that, so.
Okay.
It's a it's a bit messy.
It's a bit messy. All right, well, we will coordinate with Google to get to make sure residents are aware. And just to follow up on that, I remember when we reviewed the plans, are they going to do, like for the Villas, are they going to do one side of the street one day, you know, one time, and then do the next side of the street? Are they going to be alternating? Do you know?
I do not know at that time. That's something I will, yeah, that coordinate with them, definitely on the Villas, just so we can get ahead of it and and let everyone know, so.
Great. Well, yeah, it this is something that I that I know I've been working on, the cities have been working on since at least twenty eighteen, I want to say. The first time they came to us, so it's been a while, so I'm glad we'll have that as an option to offer to residents. Any other questions? Moving on to the Public Works report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So yeah, January is going to be a very busy month since Google Fiber is going to be there. We will also have issued the notice to proceed for the Sterns Lane lift station. They are gathering the last of their supplies, and they're supposed to begin that project on January third. Public Works will be working to clear up some vegetation so that they can just go right in and start that project and start the bypass and everything, get that going as soon as possible. So hopefully that project will move along very quickly. The the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three combined C I P project, which includes projects on Lone Oak, Sunset Trail, Highway two ninety, A I S D, Jones Road. It's a pretty big project, is out for bids right now, and so hopefully we'll have them, we'll solicit a good number of bids, and we'll have those back to council in January for review. We are going to be installing some street and flood signs around the area, and if anybody has any questions about anything else on the report, I'd be happy to answer those.
And just as a note, I think the speed signs, at least one of them's been installed on Jones.
Yes, that's the test one, yeah.
And I actually saw it in use today where I saw a truck speeding down Jones, and they saw the flashing light and they slowed down, so.
I saw that too.
Yeah, I just, I thanks for installing those. I think it'll be helpful to hopefully.
Hopefully fewer hit curbs.
Council, any questions for Public Works? Councilmember Young, I need to get my names now.
Yeah, just a quick question on one of the items you have was the cleaning of the Reese Bridge.
Yeah.
Is that just cleaning up some of the debris that's falling down, or is it actually going to be some of the repairs to to where that debris is falling?
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. It's cleaning up stuff that's fallen down, making some of the repairs, power washing and cleaning it, because it gets a lot of dirt and gunk and just looks gross over time. So yeah, it's a it's a combination of all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I am determined to closely track the lift station. Can you give us an update?
Sure. The lift station, they will be coming out on January third is when theirs should be starting. They will be starting bypassing pumping. And basically, they're going to try to do that and replace the pumps as quickly as possible. I think they are shooting for being able to do that within a week. And then, of course, there's the other pieces of the lift station, like the fence has to be brought to code, the water line, all of those things that have to be kind of put in. So that'll be the kind of final project, but the majority of the project, and Austin Armature was at the preconstruction meeting as well, that they are also coming in at the same time. They're going to disconnect the current pumps, it'll move to bypass, and when they're doing a bypass, it'll be happening overnight. They're going to have people watching it overnight the entire time that that is on bypass, just to make sure there's no issues. And then they'll go in, take the pumps out, put new pumps in. They do have to go down in the into the wet well to replace some of the elbows and pieces where the connections happen. So they're prepared for that. They're going to be welding those and putting those together on site. They're going to be made out of stainless steel, because we'd probably be waiting till two thousand and twenty-four for ductile iron at this point. So yeah, that's basically kind of the gist of the project and where it will go. It's supposed to, they're they're, they came up with a really good solution, I think, that makes the bypass simpler. We have less chance of issues. Once they put it on bypass, they'll also have wastewater transport system come out and do a super good deep clean of the lift station before anybody goes down into the into the wet well. So is there any other particular questions?
So the majority of this work will be completed by when?
Hopefully mid-January.
So mid-January, so very soon?
Yeah, it should be hopefully very quickly. Yeah, I would imagine they're wanting to move pretty quickly and be in and out as quickly as they can. I mean, barring weather complications, things we can't control, but generally February is our crazy weather month, knock on wood, so.
Great. Great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosengard?
This is totally different from your report. Do you know why residential streets don't have marking separating, making them look like a two-lane road versus a one-lane road?
I do not know, but I know it's very common that residential streets, I mean, my neighborhood doesn't have, and most residential neighborhoods, I think, don't have divider lines because the roads are already pretty narrow. So I'm not sure if there's an actual reason for that, but yeah, I it's very common.
And just also note that I didn't see a list on the report, but I did see, and just it's a great job on the gables that are outside and sort of the refreshing of that material, but it looks like they're mostly done with the installation at this point.
Yeah, they're mostly done with installation. They've got a few more slats to be putting on top. They were really focused on making sure the structure was as stable as possible, because we all know everybody really wants to see the swings come back. So they were really making sure to try to stabilize that structure and put in everything they could to stabilize that as much as possible. So after they finish the little slats on top, we'll also be reconnecting all the electrical. We got it turned on for today just so that we could have light and everybody could see to leave. But we're going to finish that, and it's going to be stained to match the other wood, so that it's kind of more of a cohesive look out there. But that should be the final part of that project, and that will be, that that part will be completed.
Councilmember Johnson?
And done in-house, right?
That was done with public work staff out there.
And saved saved up on Chamonix?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Public Works? Moving on to public safety.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll just have two items. The mayor mentioned the radar signs. Like he said, the first one was installed was installed on Jones. We have seven more signs to be installed. Public Works is installing them. One of them will be in front of the elementary school, so that we'll always be able to pull traffic counts and speed, do speed studies. Each of those signs, we can go and pull speed data from them, so it will help us know where the speeders are, where to deploy our few officers that we have smartly. So we're looking forward to getting them installed. I think they're going to be in, you know, there'll be one in every, on every street, oh, every neighborhood. And then they're capable of being moved if, for some reason, we're not, they're not being utilized on one street. We can't move the pole to a busier street or an area that's interested in having one. We were planning an emergency exercise with Public Works for December. Looks like it's going to be more in January, but we are planning to sit down and working on a, like a sort of small-scale disaster and see how we work through it and what supplies we have on hand, what we don't have, and then kind of assess what we can do here in Sunset Valley. You can expect that what mid-January or so.
One question on the this, well, a kind of a comment for the the signage. So I noticed the portable sign that we have last week or earlier this week when it was deployed on.
Ernest Robles.
Ernest Robles. It wasn't working, right? And so I I don't, I'm sure you guys, you know, found that, but will these signs essentially replace the need to have that sort of portable deployment?
No, I mean, there we'll move that around still.
Okay.
But and it's not working now because of the, it was cloudy for several days. That's a sort of old technology, and a week of cloudy weather will drain the old speed trailer that we had.
Okay. And and the other question I have is as far as like deploying the signs near the elementary school, will they also be synchronized with the, you know, the the school's own speeds? Or will that, you know, have to be done manually somehow?
No, it will just tell you your speed.
Okay.
And then the posted speed limit will change through the day, but it will tell you what your speed is and.
Yeah, I I know that there's this, you know, most of the signs have a setting where if you exceed like a certain amount or the threshold, it'll start flashing or start, you know, warn, you know, doing a higher level of of visual warning. But, you know, I didn't know we were going to try to time it with the school's own out, you know, hours and things like that, but.
If we're, if it's sort of, it's new now, and we don't really, we're not real familiar with it, but I believe it is capable of being timed to where it can do it during these hours, twenty miles per hour or so, but it doesn't have a posted speed on it, so it just tells you what your speed is right now.
Okay, thanks. All right, questions for public safety? Councilmember Rosengard?
Last night, they talked about signage at the Meadows entry. What was the final decision on that?
There was, there wasn't anybody there that remembered anybody parking on the street. I believe they wanted to, they're going to just.
So it wasn't on the agenda, and so we couldn't really talk about it, but it was towards the end. I just said, by the way, we're going to be talking about it tonight, so if you have strong feelings one way or the other, then get on Open Town Hall and leave something. So we, it was kind of like a new business thing that I said, like, hey, by the way, we're going to be talking about this tomorrow.
Yeah, and it is on tonight's agenda.
Right.
So we're waiting to hear from more folks from the Meadows is what I heard in last night's meeting, because I sent out an email blast, but I I heard back maybe from five people at the time. And so the chair thought it would be better if I had more input from the Meadows. And then last night, you also, sometimes we forget to pay attention to other committees, and it was really helpful to listen in on you guys last night and and see the report that you did on the crimes that happened in our city. It's such an eye-opener to constantly see that, and one of them, we used to have a lady who worked in public safety who used to make the situation funny. And one of them that happened just got me laughing. Suspect stole a pair of shoes and walked out of the store. Later, the suspect discovered that he left his cell phone inside the store.
Right, came back to get it.
Is that when they were discovered that, yeah, yeah, and car, car, if you want to elaborate on any of that, of how many burglaries on vehicles and license plates, I mean, it's quite an eye-opener.
Oh, yeah, we were, we're, we have recovered. Now we're over fifty-one vehicles since late January. Fifty-one stolen vehicles here in Sunset Valley, not stolen from Sunset Valley, but stolen out around Sunset Valley, and then we kept, we caught them here. We've also had a number of crimes with where all the victim noticed was the car or a license plate that we wouldn't have necessarily been able to catch that person. They would have driven out of Sunset Valley. But if a store employee, if someone steals and they go out and get that license plate, we can put them in the city camera system. And the cameras will alert us when that car comes back to town, so that if there's some sort of organized retail theft suspect, and they've been going around the surrounding area, when they come into Sunset Valley, we deploy the officers to the shopping center, and we just kind of wait where we're visible. And that's enabled us to, we've stopped several people. We've solved, I think, like four theft cases that we would have never been able to solve. Because most of these people are in and out so quick, but we've been able to be proactive. We've solved, I think, four road rage cases based with these cameras. Numerous stolen license plates. I mean, each month, these cameras are paying off for us, and we're glad to see that the number of hits are going down, which hopefully, you know, people, the word is getting out in the jails and all that, that, hey, stay away from Sunset Valley. They have those cameras, so I'm glad to see that our numbers aren't going up actually, but they've really worked out well for us.
Councilmember Johnson?
So that's over fifty. It hasn't even been a year yet. We still have two more months.
Oh, since late January.
Yeah, and so over fifty stolen cars recovered. I I think I remember the stat. How many stolen cars a year did you used to recover? Was it?
Two.
Two, one or two? So that's pretty good.
And I didn't see it on the reports, but could chief, could you remind us about the plan for the trail of lights and what dates that we might be having active, you know, extra traffic?
The the Trail of Lights parking is going to take place over at Burger Stadium. In previous years, we've received complaints from people that the buses are going down Jones to Westgate. And when the light is stopped there, it causes a traffic jam in the evening. It's been loud, and we've received complaints. So we're going to have the buses come outside, exit onto two ninety service road from Burger Stadium to where they don't come down Jones to Westgate. But it's, it will be busy at Jones and Ernest Robles when they come to turn into the stadium, but they shouldn't run into that red light traffic there at Westgate. Other than that, you shouldn't know, the people that live along Westgate, I mean, along Jones, Pillow, Reese, and Lone Oak, they shouldn't notice too much from it. There'll be occasional times when some bus driver will deviate from the schedule, but we'll be watching it, and we'll contact the Trail of Lights Foundation and let them know that the buses are not sticking to the route.
And the city administrator pulled up the date, so the first date is going to be Saturday and this weekend, and then the sixteen, seventeen, twenty through twenty-third. So those will be the times that we might have an impact from the the buses going on on Jones and Ernest Robles.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for public safety? All right, council, so I'm going to propose that we jump to item number six, which is we'll handle our consent items, and then we'll go back to item number four, so we're a little bit as close as possible to the time certain. But we can probably at least do the the agenda items for approval on consent, but and we'll go back to item number four immediately after that. So with that, we'll move to gen number six, which is council consideration of gen items for approval on consent. Councilmember Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent of gen items number seven, number eight, number nine, number ten, number eleven, number twelve, number thirteen, number fourteen, number fifteen, and number sixteen.
All right, the motion is to approve on consent items number seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Are there any items that councilmen wish to pull from that list? Going once, going twice? Councilmember Johnson, you got a look on your.
I'll second.
Okay, you'll second? All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving on consent items number seven through sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, we approved on consent. Item number seven, approval of the minutes from the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting and November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two called meeting. Item number eight, canceling the December twentieth and twenty and January third regular city council meetings, and just as a note, if we need to have a called meeting, we can schedule. we can schedule that, but that way we can accommodate the holiday schedules of all the staff and council members. Item number nine, appointment of Melissa Marquez as city secretary under section 31.55 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Item number 10, the appointment of Brant Boozer, Miguel Huerta, Robert Reitz, Robert Skewes, and Lisa Versace as regular members of the zoning commission, and John Frick and Russell Harding as alternate members of the zoning commission for a two-year term. Item number 11, appointment of Ravi Srina Vasan as a regular member of the Board of Adjustment for an unexpired term. Acceptance, item number 12, acceptance of the resignation of Miles Fox from the Sunset Valley Arts Commission. Item number 13, the creation of a long-range financial planning ad hoc committee as recommended by Budget and Finance Committee, and as per the backup, we'll be opening that up for applications to the members of the public, and then making appointments in January. Item number 14, approval of an agreement with the Sustainable Food Center for a hotel occupancy tax fund grant in an amount not to exceed $25,500. Item number 15, authorizing the release of a request for proposals for janitorial services. And item number 16, approval of the auction and/or recycling of surplus items under chapter 37 of the City Code of Ordinances. All right, so Council, Councilor Johnson, you have your items?
Yeah, I don't want some of these things to pass with like no fanfare, so I was gonna just, I wanted to thank Miles for, for his help on Arts Commission. He, he brought some really good ideas and did a lot of, a lot of great work there. Melissa, you've been killing it, so congrats. Welcome to Lisa Versace. I talk to her a lot, and I think she'll, I think she'll be really fun on zoning. That's a good.
Finally have a woman on zoning? It's been the men's club.
Oh, yeah. And then Sustainable Food Corp just left, but they had a baby, so that's okay. But I wanted to just, once again, oh, yeah, absolutely. No, we're excited to get you guys the money. We're, love the farmer's market. Oh, awesome. It's already paying off.
Thank you. All right, yeah, thank you for the recognition, and I appreciate everybody who's served or is willing to, to serve on our committees. They make up a crucial part of our input into our council process, so thank you. So Council, we're gonna move back to gen number four, election of the mayor pro tem is required by section 22.037 of the Texas Local Government Code. Included in the backup is a procedure that I would like to follow. We did this last year, just to make sure it's following Robert's orders. So what I will do, just as a kind of walk, brief walkthrough, is I'll open the floor for nominations. You can nominate any member, including yourself. It doesn't require a second. After nominations are finished, I'll close the nominations, and then I'll confirm with the people that were nominated that they wish to serve. And then if there are, if there's only one person who's been nominated and wishes to serve, then we'll move to appoint them by acclamation, or we'll disappoint them by acclamation. And if there's more than one person, then we'll move to a vote, and we'll vote until there's not a tie. So that way everybody has a chance at making the nominations they wish to. So with that, Council, I'm gonna open up for nominations for the mayor pro tem as required by section 22.037. So if there's somebody that, if either yourself or somebody you wish to see nominated, Councilor Reitz?
I would like to nominate Rob Johnson.
Okay, Rob Johnson's nomination. Any other nominees? If I close it and you don't accept, I'm gonna be very angry. All right, I'm gonna close the nominations and just confirm, Rob, do you consent to be nominated for the mayor pro tem role?
I do.
All right. With that, we only have one person who's been nominated, so we can appoint Councilor Johnson as mayor pro tem for the term of one year, with a round of applause. All right, and thank you for serving that role. Hopefully it's not gonna be called on, you know, frequently. I think Alfonso had to do it once or maybe twice.
Yeah, I think it was twice.
Okay, so Council, next we're gonna move on to gen number five, which is consider assignment of council member liaisons to standing committees and the Arts Commission as required by chapter 31 of the city's Code of Ordinances. And so Council, you should have received an email just collecting the feedback that I requested from everyone individually, just asking for their preferences. That's a good discussion point, because typically, you know, we wanna make sure that everybody has, you know, some alignment with, you know, with their interest. I will note that, based on everybody's feedback, you know, so far there's not a person who's said specifically they want to be on Public Works, and we do need to make an appointment for that committee to make sure that we're filling Alfonso's role, who is so diligent as far as this sort of committee. But that being said, so this is gonna be, we can have a discussion, we can have, you know, we can have a motion to open up discussion. You know, it can just be a state of restatement of preferences that anybody has reconsidered after kind of thinking about it over the last few days and seeing what other people's preferences are. So we might start with that, just to say, you know, is there, anybody have any updates to what they stated as far as their willingness to serve on committees or interest in serving on committees? Councilor Johnson?
Well, I, I think, I'll make it easy by taking things off the table. I think, I think, I had talked to Wanda, and I think we both put down two, because you asked for two. And so, and so it was just like, we can, we can talk this out, you know, on the dais, but just, just let me know. But I think we're happy with our assignments, and there was no other, so we can just push those aside.
Preference for Public Safety, preference for CED.
Yeah.
And I would also, just a thought to see if I can talk Councilmember Young into the Public Works, in the sense that it is, it would give you exposure to all of our projects, and you do have the budget background for it, but the, some of the other background would be, you would get that exposure. It would be difficult for Councilmember Rosengarden to do that, because her husband is the chair, and I don't think that's an appropriate liaison type of, type of thing. So that's my suggestion, if you'd be open to that.
I would be. That's, I think that's completely fair. Obviously, I know finance better than I know anything else. And I do want to, one of the things that I was very interested in was the long-term financial planning, but I don't need to be the liaison to finance to be a participant in that. So I'm fine with Public Works.
Councilor Johnson?
On, on top of that, I, Arts Commission is like my alma mater, but like, it is, it's Karen's baby, so we can, I think if she wants that, then I think that could be one of the ones that, that, one of maybe two that she takes. So.
Yes, I would like to stay on the Arts Commission, especially since we're ramping up some new processes for the Art Fest this year. And so we just had our elections, and now we have a chair and a vice chair. So I would like to stay with that one. And I also would like to stay with Planning and Environmental, because I've worked with them very closely over the last year, and there's a lot of really in-depth work that we've done together and learning that we've done together. So I'd like to continue working with them.
Yeah, and I appreciate Councilor Reitz's suggestion. Also, I really appreciate Councilor Young's flexibility. I think, having served on Public Works after Budget and Finance, I think that there is some, you know, validity to being able to get exposure to the project side, and, you know, I think there's, I, I would encourage all the council members to have a, you know, a flexibility, because I think it's, it's to our benefit when we get to engage with different elements of the community as well. But it sounds like then we have a consensus, or we're reaching consensus if we wanna move forward with the motion.
I move that the council, Council Johnson would be on Public Safety, Council, Councilmember Reitz would be on CED, Councilmember Medicus would be on PNE, Councilmember Rosengarden remains on Budget and Finance, Councilmember Young would be on Public Works.
And then Arts Commission as well.
And Arts Commission for Councilmember Medicus.
All right, so the motion is to appoint as liaisons, Councilmember Johnson, Public Safety, Councilmember Reed, CED, Councilmember Medicus to Arts Commission and to PNE, Councilmember Rosengarden to Budget and Finance, and Councilmember Young to Public Works. Is there a second for that? Councilor Young?
I second the motion.
All right, most are seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And Council, I appreciate your thoughtfulness in this process. Sometimes it can be a little difficult, because it's, you know, we all have our, our specific interests, but, you know, we're all also here to serve, so I appreciate everybody's flexibilities. Thank you. All right, so Council, we are moving quickly through this agenda. We do have our time certain item at seven, which we'll, we won't be able to go to until that time, because we have applicants that are here, and also making sure that we're doing our presentation.
Yes, and the, yeah, the auditors, you know, they, they, they are coming in person, but they also understood that they would be after agenda item 17. I don't know if the representative for item 19, the 5601 Brody variance is here, Gary's here, but I was thinking, because we have residents here, if we could move on to agenda item 20, so.
Yep.
That would be my recommendation.
All right, so we, so Council, unless there's any objections, we'd like to move on to our presentation item about the staff direction for parking, scheduled to restrict parking along the entrance to Sunset Valley Meadows. All right, so we'll move on to gen item number 20. So we'll begin with a staff overview of this item, and then we'll open it up for council questions as well as public input.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this was an item presented by Councilmember Johnson. I'll let him address anything, but essentially there was a request from some residents in the Meadows to Councilmember Johnson for a possible no parking stretch along the, the entrance to the Meadows. It's a 0.3 mile stretch. So if you can see here in the, in the map, they're along Lovegrass Lane. This stretch stops at the, you know, the first property line of the Meadows, the, the no parking zone. In addition to, Councilmember Johnson also inquired about possibly putting signs, e- either, in addition to making it a no parking zone, or in lieu of possibly putting signs as we've put up at 37 Lone Oak, which just indicate that parking for the trails is at 3205 Jones Road. So there are other areas of the city where there's no parking, or possibly no parking with, unless you have a residential permit. So it would not be that situation. It would just be a strictly no parking zone. But again, this is not a action item. This is a presentation, discussion, and possible direction if, if Council wants staff to bring back an ordinance, amending the parking schedule, if we wanna gather more information, or possibly, as we've done with 37 Lone Oak, rather than amending the parking schedule, we just put some signage. And really, it's just encouraging individuals to park at City Hall when they're using the trail system.
Before we open it up for council questions, one question I have is, do we have any statistics or information on the number of, like, times when we've had issues? I don't know if there's been, since we don't have an ordinance right now, we don't, we're not actually enforcing anything, but have there been complaints or anything?
Administration's unaware, and I don't believe Chief can attest, but I don't think there's been a.
No. I spoke to the trail officer that goes through there and to monitor that, and he, he says it's been sporadic. Sometimes people will park there and go walk on the trail. Then he said historically, it's, it's been about like that. Every now and again, there'll be a person who persistently will park there, or they will park there and then enter the trail from a, from a, like, unofficial path of the trail, like the fire break or something like that. But no, like, continuous parking there, or any traffic hazards created by someone parking there. It's just been sporadic.
We'll let Councilmember Johnson follow up to his staff for any information he wants to present for this agenda item, then we'll open up for council for questions.
Sure. So I was contacted by Lisa Cobb, who is here. And so I had heard things about parking issues in the Meadows before, and we, there was kind of just a little bit of unorganized, like, discussion about at the end of Public Safety last night, and one member kind of expressed that he's been through there and doesn't see people parking. But I think this is a very, I think it's a pretty complicated way to solve a problem that doesn't exist, so I kind of would imagine that there, there is parking there. If we want to, if we wanted to quantify it better, then I think that would be, since we're not gonna take any action, then we might as well, like, use the time in between to actually get some numbers around it. I, I feel like Lovegrass is pretty narrow there, right? So if somebody does park, we don't want people parking off, and if somebody is parked there, then it's, it's not, it's probably not the safest thing to have somebody parking there, right?
Yeah, I don't think there's a street in Sunset Valley that it's safe to park on the street end, so.
Okay, so, you know, it, it might just be one of these things where it's not a bad idea anyway. My idea was, you know, when we got the, the no parking signs at the end of Reese, Chief Ford had said that they would have to be like every 15 feet, and I, that was in my mind worse than the, the school parking, exactly. And then I think when Chief Carter came on, it was like the first question I asked him within two weeks, and he's like, no, that's crazy, like, no, you don't have to. So we, we literally have one, however far in from the, from Jones, there's one at the property line between us and Tammy, and then there's one down at Sharon and Tammy's. So there's three signs, and you barely even notice them. So that's what I was thinking for here, just very light touch, say in between the signs. The people will get the hint. I'm also thinking, you know, I, I feel bad kind of pushing people off of places to park to access the trails, but my idea eventually is a, is a parking lot further down Brody a little bit, which I'm, I'm gonna like work on, which I think is a much better solution than even having people park it at the, at City Hall. I think that is gonna be a great solution. I would even use that parking lot, because you're so close into the trails at that point. But we'll get there. So, yeah, when our resident and president of HOA comes, then I figured, let's go for it. I think there was, we moved it off of action for what reason?
Just in time to get a drop, to get the actual ordinance language together. So, I mean, if, if the council direction is, okay, bring back an ordinance, then that's something that can be brought back. If we wanna bring back
Yeah.
more data, we can, or we can just bring back the ordinance to codify this to be adopted at the next meeting.
Yeah, the, I think, use our time to gather data, but as Chief said, it's like, one, one car can be, can be dangerous, and if we have other places to park. The, my, my biggest concern was that, that we can see where the trail cuts over. It's very far to the right, correct, right there. And so the, if, if parking got pushed, I forget who, who told me this, but basically, once you get to where the houses are, you can't say like, no parking, right? Was that you? It was somebody I talked to during this.
Would not, it would not be ideal.
It would not be ideal.
To start trying to police no parking in the neighborhood.
My, my worry was that it just becomes a problem of the first house, which is.
Yes.
So I didn't get a chance to talk to the other two, the other two houses, but you would be most directly impacted. So I think I'm done talking, and.
That's her, Reitz.
So yes, that is my house right there, right where the parking, the no parking would end. So I don't have a problem stating that parking is somewhere else for the trail. I do have a problem with the no parking, because that is exactly where they will park. And it's just, this is the very same problem we had at Lone Oak, where we just pushed the parking problem down, and that's not fair. And frankly, that's not even my bigger problem. My bigger problem is that every day, at least probably three to five to maybe 10 people pull into my driveway every day and use it as a turnaround. But that's just, that's just what it is, and I'm okay with that. It's, it's not that big a deal. But I don't want to encourage more parking at my house. So I would be very opposed to no parking. But I am okay with a, a, a push to park somewhere else. And I would really strongly wanna look at the parking lot at the other property on Brody and see what we can do, and see how that makes sense, and really look at that property and see if that could resolve it. The other thing I wanna point out is that, that if you haven't been down Lovegrass, they have, there are a lot of these big stones that are placed there, which makes it, it makes it difficult when two cars are passing, because you have to slow down and you've got to maneuver. got to maneuver, and when you have two big trucks or two big things, it is, you have to go really slow, because it's a problem, because it's very narrow. The reason I believe they have these big stones is to protect our sprinkler systems, and, and that also discourages people from parking there, because you pretty much have to parallel park in between those stones, and so there's, there's not a whole lot of parking there. I've not personally seen it as a problem, but I, I don't have a problem encouraging parking somewhere else, so.
Counsel for Rosenbaum, then councilor Johnson, or mayor for Tim Johnson.
And I thought the, the signs that we were told were leftover signage from Lone Oak were signs that said, trail parking at City Hall, nothing about no parking, because I remember when you brought it up, you didn't want to say no parking, you wanted to say where to park.
That's correct, they're just suggestive signs to say park at City Hall.
And we could use that very sign and put it on a poll that already exists versus putting up another poll that there were people who were opposed to that.
Yep.
Excellent.
It could be that.
So, and anecdotally, I, I forget who I talked to about this, but it was somebody on Lone Oak who said, like, the problem is almost non-existent there anymore. People see it, and it's just, it's just a suggestion, but they don't, they take the suggestion, let's just say that. And Wanda, I feel you, we are also the first house on Reese. The number of cars that turn around in our, but there's nothing you can do about that. But next house, maybe.
Counsel, read.
I saw that. Right next to you. I was gonna ask, we have our HOA president here, if she wanted to make any comments or anything like that, or.
You have to go to the podium. Just so it's for the folks at home here.
Okay, I've been talking with Rudy and also Wanda about, and also Robert, about the signage issue, but I had just said, could we encourage, you know, you had mentioned there were signs left over, could we just have those leftover signs just pushing the parking over to the, maybe that newly acquired property on Brody? Not even City Hall, because parking here is limited too. That was my initial, not a no parking, but just trying to divert it to another part of the city that the city's already acquired that would be more appropriate, because if you have a dedicated area to trailhead there that you're already creating, then you're taking that traffic or that parking off of a very narrow road. There have been several times in the last several months, I've been driving up and down Lovegrass to either come in or leave, and cars are coming right up to the center of the road as if they don't understand that's a two-lane road, and I've had to swerve to miss them, and if there had been a car there, it would have been a really bad accident. So that was my thought, was, you know, we've got that issue, and then we've got, if there's a car there, it creates another hazard, so, yeah, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Mayor, okay. Any other members of the public wish to speak to this item? So counsel, direction of staff, what I, what I'm gathering from the feedback is that we want to proceed with posting the, the parking is at City Hall for now until we find a, potentially another place if we develop any of our property, but at minimum, it seems to be consensus that we can provide that direction. We don't need an ordinance for that, we can actually just.
Yep, that can be staff direction to just direct us to place to put up the signs.
Okay. Mayor, pretend.
I, I think I thought about that, that's very good, you hooked up on that right away. The, and I don't know why I dorked out about this, but like, the, the trail crossing is really probably where it would start. I'm, I'm sorry, Lisa, is, when you have seen parking, are they parking pretty much right at the trail crossover?
They're parking really close to that crossover area.
Okay, yeah, so we'll start there, you can almost just start with two, and then if they, if they move any direction, then.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting, because until this topic was brought up, I would've said, I have never seen a car parked there, and I, I go to the trails frequently, and then, like, I think the, the week after this, you, it was brought up, like, you know, a few weeks ago, car right there. But the other place I have noticed that they park is at the water quality pond, that's a little bit further down, there's a little bit, there's like a little driveway that you can kind of drive into. Right, and I've seen people, I've also seen cars recently, not, I mean, it's very infrequent, but I've, I've seen cars pulled in there as well, so they might be, benefit to having signage, just, you know, at that water quality driveway as well, so. All right, counsel, any further discussion on this item? Appreciate it, oh, go ahead. It'd be a holiday present.
Yeah, probably, probably, probably actual install, hopefully, probably just after the holidays, so a couple of weeks.
Sorry.
But we'll move.
By January.
By January, we should have the signs installed.
All right, I appreciate coming and speaking to this issue, and with that, counsel, we've got direction of staff, and we don't need to bring this back. If we, we can continue to assess it, of course, and if, you know, it becomes that this doesn't mitigate the problem, and there continues to be an issue, then we can revisit this. All right, so counsel, what I would suggest is, because we do have our time certain item, is that we take a break until seven PM, just because we have ten minutes, and I don't think there's time for us to go into either item number eighteen or item number nineteen, and we will start right at seven PM for our time certain item for the, the consideration of approval of final plot. So with that, we're gonna break for ten minutes and come back exactly at seven o'clock, resuming our, with item number seventeen. All right, counsel, we're gonna resume our agenda with the agenda number seventeen, consider an act on approval of a final plot of four point nine six six acre acres out of T Bissell survey eighteen abstract three, also known as sixty-four oh five Brody Lane, and we'll begin with a staff overview of this item.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. Just as an overview, this is for the development, proposed development at sixty-four oh five Brody Lane. In February, city council approved a rezoning, and then in March, a subsequent special use permit approval for the development of a restaurant and botanical garden eatery at sixty-four oh five Brody Lane. Before construction can commence, and really before the city council can consider the final approval of the site plan, the city must approve a formal subdivision, which is a plating of the property, so the, the property lines, the formal property lines of the property. This property has never been platted, it did require a preliminary plat, which the council approved on August sixteenth. Staff and the city engineer have reviewed the final plat, and the plat meets all code requirements. The plat also does not require any variances from the adopted Sunset Valley codes. In addition to the plat is subdivision improvements, which is going to be the construction of a water line, and Gary is here to answer any questions. In addition, so the, the city engineer brought to staff's attention, so for the recording of the plat, the plat shall be recorded until the city council has approved, the final plat and the accompanying construction plans, cost estimate, security, and maintenance guarantees. So, again, the, the plat approval is ministerial, council shall approve a plat as long as it meets, you know, everything within the code, and the zoning is appropriate, which the zoning has already been changed, and special use permit, permits have been approved. This situation for this property, the developers have not yet purchased the property, so they are waiting until they receive all the legislative approvals, which after tonight should be just the watershed development and final site plan. should be just the watershed development and final site plan, which has actually already been submitted. The city has not accepted the, that application yet. We are waiting until the final plat is approved, then we will accept the application, process it, and it is scheduled to be before you on January 17th. So at the next council meeting, you will see the final site plan and watershed development permit, which should be the last time that this project is before you and should be the last legislative piece they need to meet. So yeah, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The developers are here. Gary is also here. If you have any questions regarding the approval process, which is the final plat approval, but then the city engineer is recommending that the council authorize city staff, which includes engineer and legal, to basically give the final approval before the plat is recorded, before it is taken to the county, it's gotten all the required signatures, and we record it. And a part of that process before the plat can officially be recorded is that the proposed improvements, the subdivision improvements, which is the water line, that the fiscal security has been set in place, that the plans have been improved, and the fiscal security, meaning the funding sources, the bonds put up for that project have been approved. So the cities, the city engineer is recommending that council authorize city staff to basically check that all off before the plat is recorded, so they don't have to come back again to City Council.
What does our code require?
So the code requires... So in 12A, it says, "The final plat shall not, shall not be filed for recording." So this is again, the recording. Shall not be filed for recording with the county clerk until the City Council has approved the final plat, which is on the agenda for tonight, and the accompanying construction plans. The plans are also included for the water line, cost estimates, and security and maintenance guarantees. So that is the only piece that you do not see before you tonight. So that, yeah.
And we don't have that because, why?
They do not have that at this time. They have not gone out for bonds. They haven't actually purchased the property yet. They are wait, again, they are waiting until they have their final legislative approval before actually purchasing the property, putting up for bonds for the construction of the water line.
So is it appropriate that the city staff sign off on that, or does the City Council have to sign up on those estimates and fiscal securities?
So the mayor signs the plat. So the mayor will sign the plat that is taken to the county to be recorded. So really, it is the mayor signing off on the actual plat. As far as the, can you speak to the?
My name is Gary Freeland. Nice to meet you. Haven't met you yet. City engineer. So kind of to back up and maybe help the explanation a little bit, the subdivision plat creates a legal lot. In this situation, this subdivision plat requires public improvements, which is the water line. So in cities where you have to do the public improvements, these public improvements need to be, have fiscal security, which can be one of three or four methods. The two most common methods would be for the applicant to provide bonding, payment and performance bond, or another alternative is to build the public improvements, have those accepted by the city, and then get the plat recorded. You can also use a letter of credit from a bank or something like that. But the purpose of this is to make sure that the city doesn't have a recorded plat where the applicant, for some reason or another, doesn't fulfill those obligations of building that water line. The bond is, for lack of a better term, an insurance policy, where it's a payment performance bond. If the developer doesn't build this, or the contractor walks away, or something of that nature, then the city can call the bond, they can get those funds, they can hire a contractor, they can build this water line so that they have a subdivision, they have a legal lot that is served with public utilities. The, the problem here is that sometimes, like in this situation, there, there are lenders involved, or there may be a real estate contract that's contingent upon certain approvals. And to ask the developer to bring secured fiscal security, whether it be bonding, or even to build the water line before the City Council approves the plat, you know, it's a two-way street, and so the developer, the applicant wants some assurances, just like the city does. And so it's very common to approve a plat, and then when those bond documents are provided to the city, when that insurance policy is in place and in hand, you can take that plat and get it recorded. Or alternatively, the developer goes and builds it. Once it's in the ground, then you go get that recorded. And so the, the code requires that the plat and the construction documents and the cost estimates and the security and maintenance guarantees, as well as current tax certificates, be approved by City Council prior to plat recordation. And, and so what we're saying is if council would approve the plat and the construction documents, then it would be, the city staff could then go forward with that, the developer could hire a contractor, they could get payment performance bonds in place, these can be provided to the city, then the plat could be recorded. Another thing here is the tax certificates, the current tax certificates. If they provide you tax certificates for this year, then they're current for this year to record the plat. But then if the developer decides to go build the line and record the plat next year, then the plat, the tax certificates may be out of date. And so, so there are some decisions that the developer needs to make, the applicant needs to make, to move forward with this project. And so that's, I hope that helped clarify it. If you have any questions, let me know, but that, it's, it's...
Councilor Rosengren.
So basically, you're saying we have some problems in our code?
It, it's kind of a non-typical situation, and, and I'm, I'm not an attorney, but also the House Bill 3167 that brought in the shot clock, it, it may conflict with some of these things as well, too. But I mean, you know, I think, I think when the plat is brought to council, the City Council has to deny it, approve it, or approve it with conditions. So these could be some of those conditions. And it's, it's somewhat typical, and I always hate to say, this is how other jurisdictions do it, but it is very typical for the, the, these administrative processes to kind of happen after there's some assurance that that plat, you know, can, if, if the plat can get recorded if we get the bonds in place, or if the water line gets built.
Mayor Pretten.
So this is a little, it's on topic, but it, so we're aware, and Sylvia put together that kind of like suggested development timeline, right? And now I think we have a development person that is going to start soon, January 1st.
Second week of January.
Second, second week of January. Soon. And so hopefully, that'll be moving. So the, I, I understand why that part is kind of a little messed up. How, then this is more for my knowledge, how common is this situation where they're like, they're not developing until all the administrat, or they, they don't want to purchase the land until the administration is done? Is that, is that common? And I've never done like land development, so...
In, it is, it is. A lot of times, it's a term called shovel-ready. A lot of developers will get a piece of property under contract, they'll go get all their, you know, the plaits, they'll even go to the point where they get the plans approved. And, and, you know, before they pay that final fee, before they close on the property, they'll get a letter from the city, and it's called a shovel-ready letter. Basically, the city says, "This property is shovel-ready upon payment of final permit fees." I mean, it, we take it to the very, very, very end, and, and it happens. It, you know, I mean, 50/50. I mean, I've seen that quite a bit.
Okay. And I have, while I got here, another question is, this, this property doesn't, isn't platted, and there's several like that. When, I, I don't have a history of doing land development or anything, so why are there so many properties that don't have plaits? Is just, is it something that happened?
Rules and regulations changing over time, and just like the city of Sunset Valley, most other cities, the only enforcement or policing mechanism is the building permit.
Okay.
So that came in, they said, "We want to put up a building," and we said, "Now, now we've got to clean up the sins of the past."
Okay. No, that's perfect. Thank you.
Councilor Reitz.
Okay. So if I understand it, and I, I totally understand that you would want to purchase after you get all the approvals and that type of thing, that makes a lot of sense to me. But what, what I don't get is our role tonight, is if we approve this, and I assume we're approving it with conditions, that these things will happen before the recording, and do we have to come back later and approve these later developments, the fiscal security, et cetera, legally?
That, that is part of, that would be, again, that is the staff's recommendation, is that the final plat is approved with contingency, that stat, that council is authorizing staff, city staff, to basically clear the plat for recording because it's met the fiscal security requirements.
Okay. And that works legally, Barbara?
As long as, I mean, as long as the conditions are clear that you are transferring... Conditions are clear that you're transferring, basically, your, your authority of approval over to the administration so that they can continue this process along without having it brought back. They're going, they're, they are going to be required to review the conditions to ensure that they are met, and upon them meeting that, in concurrence with the engineer, I would suggest as well, that then, at that point, then the mayor would be authorized to go ahead and sign the plat and go ahead and get it recorded.
Okay. Are these standardized amounts, like the fiscal security, are those kind of standardized? I mean...
Yes, yes, they are. Once the final cost estimate is approved, if it's, you know, $200,000, then the payment and performance bonds will be in that amount. Once the water line is constructed, then they'll need to provide a warranty bond after it is, so that the city has a two-year warranty on the product. The warranty bond is not 100% of the construction cost. I would have to double-check the code, but I think it's stated in there. I think it's 25% maybe, but it's, it's a smaller portion.
But it's very standard types of things, so, okay. And I think my last question is to you guys, what's your plan? When do you plan to, to buy the property if this is approved, et cetera?
Good evening. Tom Triviana, I'm the applicant. Many of you know this, we've been at this for 18 months. So we signed a contract, and Gary McIntosh, who's the executor of the state, has been wonderful in extending our contract as we go through the processes. The, the land has no value to us unless we're able to build the wonderful botanical garden, cafe, and eatery that we're talking about doing. So I have done personally 100 developments in my life, and I've all, I've never taken down the land without knowing whether you could build what you were wanting to build.
Yep.
Part of the trickiness for us is the next two meetings of this, because we filed the watershed development permit, and appropriately, it was suggested that it not be reviewed until after tonight's meeting. And then with the two council meetings being canceled for December 20th and in January, that doesn't even get reviewed until the 17th of January. So we don't want to be put in a position where we're having to put up several hundred thousands of dollars on something that we may not own or ever develop. So that's why we're asking for the council to work with us. We have every intent of going forward with the project, but we need to be prudent about the fact that there still are approvals that could go sideways. Thank you.
Mayor Pretten, and then Councilor Young.
So Wanda almost got there. For me, for me, for one of my questions, which was like, it feels like a ball or strike kind of situation tonight, but I just want to, before, do you remember, we had this meeting quite a few months ago, and I had this list of all my concerns about the, the actual project, and Sylvia assured me, my time will come to dot all my...
Are you talking about the conditions that were placed?
Right. That's not, that's...
Right. It doesn't feel like it's tonight, but I just don't want to... We can, we can talk about some of those at the, at the, at the next meeting, when we're discussing the final site plan. But again, some of that is just going to be addressed during the building permit process that won't be legislative.
Exactly.
However, we will address some of those, including, you know, the 10% runoff improvement and other part of the conditions at the watershed development permit and final site plan approval.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mayor Young.
Just a question on this. Assuming we approve this, and I think we should, and it goes to you, what happens if some of the conditions are not met, for whatever reason? Because things can happen. What happens then?
Specifically for the recording of the plat, specifically to the fiscal security?
Yes, specifically to that, yes.
It would, it would not be, it would not be recorded.
Not be recorded?
Yeah. It would, it would not be recorded, and therefore not be a legal lot. It's not a legal lot until it's recorded with the county.
And then we would come back and try to resolve any of the issues that came up?
Correct.
And I hope no issues came up, come up. But I think it's a question that's always worth asking.
And, and also, Gary, the city engineer and I spoke, and, and as an additional condition, if, if and when a motion is made, would be, and this just addresses another part of the code, would be to give the subdivider, the applicant, 90 days from plat approval. So that would be 90 days from potentially tonight for the plat to be recorded, which just, again, allows, because there's, there's another piece in the code, which, you know, talks about 30 days, because typically, you know, the recording happens quickly. However, you know, they have their watershed development permit and site plan review coming back in January. 90 days gives, you know, until March to get the plat recorded, to get it through the legislative process, and, and for them to work on the fiscal security.
I move to approve final plat of 4.966 acres out of T-Bissel survey 18 abstract three, also known as 6405 Brody Lane, under section 150.281 of the Land Development Code, and authorize city staff to approve recordation of the final plat and the associated subdivision improvement plans, contingent upon approval of the cost estimates and security and maintenance guarantees as hereinafter required, and certificates have been received stating that all taxes on the land being subdivided have been paid to the current year. Also, I want to add that any county is correct for the location per the subdivision plat.
And 90 days for the plat to be recorded.
I will second.
If I'm looking at the staff recommendation, isn't there additional, the, so the plat, the council shall disapprove the proposed final plat unless the plat complies with, is that part of this?
That's not, that was just, just a recommendation for the, that basically just showing the code that council basically should approve the plat if it meets the requirements of the code.
That doesn't need to be...
It wasn't intended as a condition. It was just a reminder of the, of the, of the code, of what it states.
Just want to make sure we had all of it.
Yeah.
And I'll just double-check with Barbara to make sure that that was a clear motion with the conditions.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. With that, Council, I'd like to open it up for members of the public who wish to speak to this item before we move to any taking action on the motion. So if you wish to speak to this item, please step up your microphone at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. I'm here tonight to make you aware, or make sure that you're aware of a condit- that you're aware of a condition on the site that I don't, I don't know it to be a problem presently. It depends on the wastewater utility situation. Is it possible to put the plat on the screen? Can you, my eyes aren't that good. Brody Lane is on the left. Okay, I don't see any reference to a wastewater line and a wastewater connection. I know at the preliminary plat approval, there was a lot of discussion about a water line. Would you please slide it to where we can see the right-hand side of the plat? So you can see on that upper right corner in the picture that's displayed is the corner of the subject property. And beyond that, where it says Lot 3 Rosemary Estates, is my property. There's a sewer line that comes on my side of the property line from Oakdale down the property line. Can, can I go to the screen? So in this vicinity right here is a manhole. And the Grubbs residence formerly was somewhere in this area of the property. And when Betty put in her sewer line, she ran what I believe is a four-inch line from the house back down to right here and crossed the property line and tapped into this manhole. That was many years ago. And so in the interim, there is a hedge of crepe myrtle trees that are now approximately 25 feet tall and planted like a hedge that run down the property line right against the fence right here. Also, right here on my side of the property, my electric service comes in overhead to this point. And there is a pole that I set when I built the house. It's called a secondary riser. And power comes down that pole to my electric meter and then comes out of the bottom of the meter and goes underground from here, back around this way, and connects to the back of my house. I also have a gas line that runs down the, the property here and a water line. And so the connection that I'm talking about would cross all of that. Additionally, there's a 18-inch post oak tree that's approximately right here. And to re, to put in a new sewer line, if that was necessary, there would have to be trenching in the critical root zone of that tree right here. So it would be a, a mess really, a lot of obstacles to overcome to try to run a new sewer line if, if the line that's there is not adequate and tap in where the existing line is. So I would ask that maybe if that were to come up, you consider making the connection further down the line here. Once you get past this corner, there's another electric pole about 30 feet away, and then beyond that, it's pretty open. So there's plenty of easy access and open areas to, you know, cross the, cross the property and make a connection. Not to mention that in that present location, that's where I park and there's, there's a lot going on there. So just something that I would ask you to consider going forward.
Thank you. Other members of the public wish to speak to the item? Counsel, any further discussion before we vote on the motion? Mayor Pretten.
What do we do with all that information? I'm sorry, I was just, that's my question about.
You can certainly ask follow-up if you want to for, you know, now's the time to do it, you know, we can also follow up at the next meeting. But if you want to ask the engineer about the concern or ask the applicant about the concern.
So I just asked, conferred with the public works director. And so the, the wastewater connections, that will be reviewed as a part of the final site plan. So again, that comes back before you, again, they've submitted it. We, the city has not received it officially yet, but that is slated to be on the January 17th agenda. So that issue will be addressed and reviewed by, by city staff before that meeting.
I think it'd be good to provide direction to staff to make sure that that information is reviewed. And if you need further information as part of the site plan, that it was addressed or how it was addressed, that'd be good to include.
Yeah, and I, I guess we're kind of lucky that the city currently owns that piece of property next to it, so that if we needed to work around it, then we kind of can.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Councilor Rosengard.
I would ask if the applicant could speak on this matter? The developer or, thank you.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Tammy Meagle, I'm with Meagle Engineering. I am the civil engineer on the project. And there is a public wastewater line in a public easement that runs along that property line in question. And so we will be making a new connection to that existing wastewater line that's in the easement.
Okay.
And I would have to look a little bit closer at the trees. I know there are trees and utilities, but that's pretty standard with utility construction. We'll be mindful of that.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? All right. All those in favor of approval of the final plots with the conditions specified and the 90-day time for the, from approval for the plat to be recorded, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion is approved. Thank you to the applicants and thank you to the members of the public that spoke to this item as well. And with that. Thank you. We're going to move on to.
You too.
Item number 18, which is considered an act on acceptance of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 financial audit by Haney and Company. And staff, do you want to give an introduction to the item or do you just want to jump right to the presentation?
I would be happy to give it over to Haney and Company for presentation. And I believe they prepared some physical copies of the audit to distribute, so.
Oh, good.
Handing it over.
We don't normally see you during the holiday season, but you were prepared and brought gifts, so I appreciate that.
Thank you all, I appreciate the opportunity. I'll be brief because I know you guys have a lot going on. This is the audit of the financial statements, the government-wide financial statements for the city of Sunset Valley for the year ended September 30th, 2021. It's a fairly large report, so I'm not going to go through all the pages, but I would like to draw your attention to a few things. If you turn to page two, this is our independent auditor's report. And there are three different levels, or three different types of reports, four actually, if you count an adverse opinion. But there are three different types of opinions that we issue. There's the unmodified, there's disclaimer, there's qualified, and there is adverse. This is what we call an unmodified, which is traditionally considered a clean opinion. So that doesn't mean we didn't find some, had some findings. We do and we report those at the very back. And we'll touch on that at the very end. But for purposes of this audit, we completed our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And we are of the opinion that these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with those standards. And that the activities and the aggregate, that the governmental activities, the business-type activities and the aggregate discreetly presented component unit of each major fund of the city as of September 30th, 2021 and for the, for the year then ended, relating to the changes in financial position and cash flows are in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So that is an unmodified report. There's a lot of other stuff that we say in here as it relates to the risk assessment process that we perform in, in an audit. When we perform an audit, we don't test 100% of all transactions. We use sampling methods and we, we use a risk-based approach. We also evaluate internal controls to identify controlled deficiencies that could produce errors in the financial statements. We did identify one and it's, it's going to be reported at the end. But just briefly to touch on the financial statements, turn to page nine. This is the comparative financial statements of the city, the government-wide financial statements. The statement of net position, this is like your balance sheet. And it's broken up into, or presented in, in three different categories. You have your governmental activities, your business-type activities with totals, and then the discreetly presented component unit, which is the Crime Control Prevention District. The governmental activities represent your, your five major funds, your general fund, your street repair and replacement fund, the hotel occupancy tax fund, the green sales tax fund, and the city facilities fund. The business-type activities represents your utility fund. And so these are all combined and consolidated herein. So with that said, as of December 30th, as of September 30th, 2021, the net position or equity, if you want to call it that, your assets minus your liabilities totaled $45,603,915 as of the end of 2021. Now that's up about $2.3 million from last year. And most of that increase you'll find in cash up above. The business-type activities, then the equity, the net position, was $6.4 million, which is about $207,000 higher than last year. Again, the increase is primarily an increase in your cash. And then the component unit, the equity, the fund net position increased by about $114,000. If you turn to net, turn to page 10, the changes in that position, this represents your income statement of the city, again, broken out by the government activities, business-type activities, and the component unit. About halfway down the page, there's a line called Increase/Decrease in Net Position Before Transfers. That's, that's like your net income for the year. So if you look at the governmental activities, net income was $3.1 million. That was before inter-fund transfers. Last year it was about $1.2 million, so the revenue went up quite a bit. And the main reason for that increase over last year was an increase in your, well, it's the combination of an increase in your sales tax revenues that you collected. You collected about $850,000 more than you did in the prior year, coupled with a decrease in your, in your expenses. So your, your public safety expenditures were quite a bit less this year as were your public services. In the business-type activities, revenues didn't really change much. They were about the same. And, but costs did go up a little bit, about $200,000. So there was a little bit of a, a net loss. So if you look at your, your increase/ decrease in that position before transfers, we lost about $549,000 compared to a loss of $357,000. Now, a good chunk of that is likely to be non-cash depreciation. So it's, it's not all a cash loss. So overall, when you look at the, the whole picture, net income for the, the city was about $2.6 million, which was an increase of about $1.7 million from the prior year. So overall, a positive picture. And it appears that you're in a good position for 2022. You probably increased your, your sales tax revenues over the prior year. So it shows that we're kind of, kind of starting to come out of this pandemic recession and the effects of that. Turn to page 12. Page 12 provides a summary of the capital assets of the city. You'll notice that the very bottom line, go to the very second to the last column. So as of December, as of September 30th, 2021, net capital assets totaled $28 million. So it was down from the $29 million. And again, that would be normal depreciation for the most part. And you can see how it's made up of land, it was about $9 million of that. There's some construction in progress. Buildings and improvements were $9 million. Infrastructure assets were $17 million. Furniture and equipment, about $852,000. Vehicles, $448,000, and software. So the total cost of the capital assets were $37,337, or $37,337,518. Less accumulated depreciation, that's how we get to the $28,000.
Can I ask a quick question just to, just for my own education? But I, one thing I noticed is that the, the assessed value of our land doesn't change from year to year. And just more background on why or what accounts for that number and what would cause it to change? Like when does it get reassessed as far as the value of the land since?
Yeah, so, so for accounting principles, government accounting principles and, and accounting principles in general, GAAP, fixed assets, capital assets, land, they're recorded at cost as opposed to fair market value. And so you'll never see those go up unless you acquire a new asset or if you acquire new land or you make improvements to the land. You'll see it go down if you sell it or dispose of it.
Got it, thank you very much.
You bet. That kind of gives you a high-level picture of how the city did overall. If you turn back to the very back of the report to page 53, I'm not going to go over all of the, the budgets, the, the budget variances, but I'd like to kind of go through at least the general fund with you, which is, which is the main fund, and just kind of show you how we did compared to budget last year. You'll notice that. You'll notice that we had, the city had budgeted total revenues to be about $3.8 million in the general fund. We ended up actually bringing in about $5.5 million, so that was a positive variance of 1.6 million. And again, 1.5 million of that was sales tax revenue. If you look below in expenditures, total expenditures were 3.3 million. We actually budgeted about 3.4 million, so you came in pretty close to budget. Did a pretty good job estimating those costs. So while you had an increase of about 1.5 million in sales tax, you really didn't have that much of an increase in your costs. So that drops to the bottom line in the amount of about 1.7 million, which we saw on the income statement. So overall, a very good picture of the operations and the budgeting, the reflection on the budget for that year. There are several other budget-to-actual variances. There's one each for each of the funds. I'm not going to go through them. You can look at them at your leisure. But I did want to turn your attention to our final report that we issue at the very back, page 64. Like I said, when we perform our audit, we actually are performing two audits, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. One is our financial statement audit, and then secondly, we perform an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, which requires us to take a look at compliance with laws and regulations. And our report on that is on page 64, where we report on internal control over financial reporting on page 64. And then we report on compliance and other matters on page 65. So we did have one finding on page, that we summarized on page 65. There are three basic types of deficiencies when we're evaluating internal controls. There are just your basic internal control deficiency. Then there are another level is what we call significant deficiencies, which are weaknesses in the system of internal controls that could potentially lead to a material misstatement in the financial statements. Then there is the next level, which is material weaknesses, which are those deficiencies in controls that probably will result in a material weakness or in misstated financial statements. The weakness that we found, we consider to be a significant deficiency, not a material weakness. And that is disclosed and discussed back on page 66. And well, 66 represents the deficiency that we found last year in 2020. 67 is the one for this year, and it relates to reconciliation of the due-to, due-from balances. So when there are transactions that are between these activities, it's important that there be a reconciliation done regularly, probably as often as every month, to make sure that those transactions are counterbalanced in each of the funds, so they all net to zero. Well, that hadn't been done, and so there was quite a bit of work that we had to go through to get those inter-fund balances to reconcile. But overall, it doesn't result in a loss, or it doesn't reflect fraud or anything like that. It's just the income and the expenses within each of the different funds may have been overstated or understated equally in other funds. So in balance, they had all net to zero. Well, to get each fund to stand on its own and to be accurate, we had to make several adjustments to get those in there. So our recommendation is that, starting with 2023, and it's actually a, what management has planned to do as a corrective action, is to implement a process whereby they will be reviewing those each month and making those changes or reconciling those inter-fund transactions so that when it comes time for audits, or even when your internal financial statements are prepared, and you're looking at the individual funds, they'll all balance. So that is, that's the only one that we had. But otherwise, the audit took a little bit longer than we had hoped for several reasons. We'd like to get on it right away so that we can, for this other one, so we can get you taken care of a lot sooner and get you caught up. So if nothing else, that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions on the report?
Thank you for the presentation and also going over the findings and giving us the details. And I know that, you know, we're going to be working as far as bringing back, both touching on the retreat, but also talking about workshops for discussions of how we are, what the processes are going to be changing as far as the corrective actions to address the findings, including the one that was found last year, which is the capital balance ledger. So but with that, appreciate you becoming, giving the presentation. I'll open it up for counsel for questions or feedback. We'll start, I saw your hand first, Mr. Mayor Burtin, and then we'll go to Councilor Young.
I'll make it real quick. I don't know what it was. This was riveting. I didn't expect this to be this interesting, but like, I don't know if it was the delivery or what, but I was like literally on the edge of my seat. So well done, and I'm glad there was like nothing, it all ended up happy. It's not a sad movie. So good job. That was it.
Councilor Young.
There's some issues of concern here that I think we should bring up and talk about. And I want to make it clear that what I'm saying here is not a criticism of current staff, because I know that Kyle and Lori worked very hard to reconcile the problems that popped up when the audit was done. And it's not a criticism of Haney and Company either. But the fact is that when I first came on the Budget Committee, the audit got done, in 2019, it got done on the 7th of May. The next year, the 23rd of June. The year after that, the 20th of July. And now here we are in December approving the audit. And that is a problem, because among other things, the audit is an important input to the budget cycle, which begins generally end of May, beginning of June. There are a lot of reasons why this happened. You pointed them out in here on page 67, inadequate reconciliation. I know that staff is addressing this by going back and doing this monthly. But I would like to see us make a commitment to making sure that this never happens again. I would like to see us have a goal of making sure that barring extraordinary circumstances, the audit is done and approved by counsel prior to the beginning of the budget cycle. And while I don't think that it's reasonable to expect that to happen this year, because I'm guessing we may end up starting late, I'm guessing there are still problems that staff needs to resolve, but within the next couple of years, I think we should set that as a goal and make sure that it happens every year. Because for this to slip, really seven months past when it should have, is something we should just not find acceptable. I listened to the Budget and Finance meeting where your colleague did a presentation, and she walked through the timeline of what had happened. And what had happened is that we had given, as we usually do in December, the financial statements to you guys to begin the audit, and they were lacking all the necessary information you needed. Staff came back and said, we are resource constrained, time constrained. Can we push this back to March or April? Which happened, right? And I believe your colleague came on site and worked with staff, and they got about 60%, 70% of it done. And that's when they started discovering all these problems with the reconciliation of the due-to and from balances. And that took us all the way till end of September, beginning of October, I believe, to resolve all those things. And correct me if any of this is incorrect. And then, you know, the final came out at the beginning of November and end of October, which is a long time for all this to happen. And again, I'm not placing any of this on the auditors. But I think that we need to talk about this. And at the end of the Budget and Finance meeting, they made a recommendation that counsel analyze the timeline in this audit, and that we ensure that the audit is more timely. And I think that's one of the things we should talk about in our council retreat. And you just mentioned having some workshops to go over this. I think we need to work with staff to give them the support they need to help make sure this never happens again, you know, in terms of what resources do they need, what tools do they need, and what process changes they think should be made if we need to simplify this or do whatever to make sure that this happens the way it used to and the way it So that's all I have to say on this.
Thank you. Councilor Reeves.
So I would reiterate the importance of the due-to, from accounts. I know I'm a little bit of a broken record on this, but we make decisions based upon those fund balances, and particularly at budget time. And that was, that's been an area of concern. And I think y'all have got a plan. And Kyle, maybe you can speak to that a little bit about how you are going to do it, and particularly with some cash transfers also.
Yeah, the goal, like Haney and Company recommended, is to do these reconciliations monthly and make the transfers monthly.
And by the way, we're here to assist. There's, you know, we won't lose our independence if we help you as far as review your work and stuff. If you want to bounce ideas off us, we're here for you. I just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful. So because we have fairly new staff, and so it's like, you know, some guidance if we need that, that's great, that's there. So thank you.
And we have posted, we are in the process, we posted a position for an accounting associate to help bring on board. It's a non-regular, part-time position to basically assist Kyle. So it's strictly accounting focused. So to help us catch up, because we are in the process of closing out the books for fiscal year '22 so that we can get that information to the auditor. So the plan is, we actually, we're hoping to, the original plan was to meet next week with Budget and Finance, but we're trying to work out where we can possibly postpone that meeting till, you know, early January, so that on the 17th, counsel, you all can see the final financial statements for, I believe it's August and September of 2022, and the final budget amendment, so that we can close out the books. And then we're on a, you know, I know typically, I think in the past, we would give you those in December, so that would just put us a month behind of our normal schedule.
Do we have to do an RFQ this year?
We do, yes. So that will be, so Haney and Company will be doing, performing our fiscal year '22 audit, but we will also be putting out an RFQ this year for auditors. It's that time.
Okay, so that won't delay it.
Actually, we're a little behind schedule, but yeah, that's going to be, that's going to be happening. So there will be an RFQ for moving forward for the next audit. So basically for the fiscal year '23 audit and forward.
I've got one more thing. On page 20 is our proprietary fund. So I've asked staff to identify what the transfer out was. We've got transfers in of $933,000, and that's our subsidy that we do. And then there's transfers out of 176. So I've asked staff to let me know what, explain what that is to me. But the change is 207. So my thoughts, this is really not an issue of the audit or anything. It's really more for us to consider, and perhaps you have some wisdom. So we have a fund balance of about 6.4 million, is that right, in the proprietary fund? And then we, is that about right? Am I correct on that? Yes, 6.4 million in the proprietary fund, which is our utility fund. So the question that I would like us to ponder, and it'd be nice if there's some analysis done on this, is what is the appropriate balance that needs to be in that fund? Because every year, we take general funds and move it into that fund, and in this year, we actually put in $207,000 more than what we actually spent. So it was, we took $207,000 from the general fund and added to the utility fund. Is that what we want to continue doing, particularly when we have a lot of projects coming up that will affect the utilities with the rainwater harvesting and laundry base, those types of things? But what is the appropriate balance, fund balance for that fund? And I believe our budget policy is what, three months operating? Is that what it is? Yeah, and so this far, far exceeds that. But I don't know what an appropriate fund balance should be. Do you have any wisdom on that?
Well, I guess it would come back to your budget and how your, what your plans are for the fund in question. And like you said, it is a best practice to have a few months of operating expenses as a reserve, so that you can cover those expenses should things happen. Funds that are going between these accounts, as long as they're being reconciled regularly, they should self, not self-correct, they should, everything should reconcile
Yeah, yeah.
each period, so that there shouldn't, it's not like the funds are wrong. If we're borrowing from other funds, you know, that's okay as long as they're replaced, depending on the types of funds we're dealing with. But yeah, I think it goes back to the budgetary process and what's your...
Yeah, it does. And it also goes back to our infrastructure projects and what our long-range infrastructure requirements are. And I know we subsidize this fund to make sure we have money to pay for all of our infrastructure. I just would like to understand what that plan is and see where we are. This is, it feels very healthy to me, but without all of that information. And we are looking at making expenditures, you know, in the next couple of years. And so these type of questions need to be addressed somehow. So thank you.
Two things. One, just to backtrack a little bit, as we do monthly reconciliations of the due-to, to, from, does staff also plan to provide monthly financial statements, both to the Budget and Finance Committee and the counsel?
Yeah, I believe that's how it's been done, the monthly financial statements. So yeah, we continue doing that.
Okay. And the second part, to address what you were just talking about, Councilor Reeves, I think the answer to your question is, we have to do our 40-year plan. And Carolyn, correct me if I've got any of this wrong, to understand what we need to, in the future, as we continue like pay-as-you-go for these kinds of things, what kind of balances we need to have, and what kind of transfers we need to do, we need to be doing into this fund to be able to, to be able to support that in the future. One of the things that people have pointed out is that a lot of our infrastructure was done over a 10-year period, and may all need to be replaced within a 10-year period. Hopefully not, but we need to plan for that. So I think getting that 40-year infrastructure plan done is the way to answer the question that you asked.
I think the other component is, we typically, I think it'd be useful to see like the history of those transfers and like how much we actually ended up spending, because a lot of it's based on anticipated utilization, which we, I think we talked about this with Councilor Ramon when he was on council, that we typically overbuy, right? Or overestimate what we'll buy, and we end up not needing as much. So we could get better on our estimates as well as part of this, but it'd be useful to see that history to see, you know, do we, can we adjust or tweak that so we're not just putting extra money in the fund if we're not really going to be building up for specific infrastructure project, right? There's kind of those two components, I think, so. Counsel, further discussion on this before we have a motion to potentially accept the results? If we don't accept them, we can just close our ears and just say, no, 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 no. And we also, I think it looks like we have members of the public that wishes to speak to this item as well. So let's go ahead and any further questions for Haney and Company? But that will open up for members of the public that wish to speak.
Hi, Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. If anybody didn't listen to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, I really do recommend that you do at least listen to this piece of it, because I found it very helpful. helpful in understanding what happened to get us here. I do think, in our little town, whenever something happens, you would, you would get a ordinance about it or something like that. That's, that's sort of, we've always been kind of reactive that way, and there's usually someone's name on that action. And I think the action that I would really want to see re-put to address the situation is when we're not here, that everybody knows we need to have financial policy, financial policy to make sure that there's reporting every single month because that's how I think we got here. And then there is, I want to say, was it 4K? 4K? We came up with a figure that, to address in Public Works, what Councilmember Reeves was asking as to what the burn rate was.
Yeah, I'm thinking about 5K.
5K? It, it may have jumped, but I was remembering 4K, but my memory right now, not good. But because, because we were talking about 3K, we needed to add like 800K or something. We, we need to add an infusion to bring it up to that. And I was seeing a burn rate of 4K was my memory at that discussion, but my memory can be off. But that was the burn rate, and we did the math before, roughly off the, the current plan that she presented at Public Works. But we'll get real figures for you, but Carolyn was tidying that up. I want to go back to, especially with the auditor here, wherever he went to. He leave, leave?
He's not there.
Oh, that's a bummer, because I really wanted, maybe we can bring it up and have staff talk about it. But what the, a lot of the fund stuff that I think we need to have set up is for when we get the water rate study, which is what we, how we back up our rates. And I think we really do need to look at that, especially justification for the commercial rates. I think that's a really, really important thing to do, and we've been bumping it and bumping it, and I've, I've been talking about this since the last time we did it. And so I, I think we, we need to talk to the auditors to make sure that we do this. I'm back to being a fan of having salaries come out of the general fund as much as possible except for the police. That's because I, I see justification for the salaries coming from the tax that we collect for that. But other than that, I think we just move everything else and, and salaries come out of that because we're draining the money we put away for infrastructure, which is part of our solvency, when we start taking salaries from that. I complained about it when we started doing it, I'm complaining about it now, and I think it'll be easier to track. So, and I think it'll be easier to do that for the water rate study, and we won't have all these perpetual transfers. So I'm just going to keep lobbying for that. And I think the thing that for me was the most significant piece of information, if you don't listen to that talk from the audit, was that until the person who was in charge of this left, that's when they got all, all the information. And so there was no accountability while that person was here for this audit, and that causes me concern. But it's water under the bridge, but I want to make sure we never have that happen again. So that, that was, that was my takeaway from listening to that, that that's when they finally got the information, when that person was out the door. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council, their motion? Councilor Reeves?
I move that we accept the audit as presented by Haney and Company for September 30th, 2021.
All right, so, motion to accept the fiscal year 2021 financial, or 2020, 2021 financial audits as presented by Haney and Company. Is there a second for that?
I have a second.
Mayor Pretend. Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passed. That'll take us to our last agenda item for tonight, which is Agenda Item Number 19, Consider Act on the Following Variance Request by Blimer Engineers for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations at 5601 Brody Lane. And council, our staff, you'll start with an introduction to this item, and we'll, with the applicant is here as well for questions from council.
Yes, so I believe the applicant from Osborne and EV Go is here. But Blimer Engineers, they prepared, they did the engineering and they also prepared the variance request. So there's actually, the initial variance request after the initial staff review was a variance to Section 150.332, which is impervious cover. The, this property is an 18, is an upland, so it's 18%. And so it's for an additional 75 square feet of impervious cover for the installment of electric vehicles charging stations in the Village Center. And then as engineer, city engineering reviewed, there was an additional variance to the parking section of the Land Development Code, which is 150.588, for nine additional compact parking stalls. For the variance to impervious cover, so the EV Go charging stations would add an additional 75 square feet of impervious cover. The area of increase is to be used as flat work pads for the electrical charging facilities. And according to the city engineers review, would have a very minimal pedestrian traffic and virtually no automobile traffic. The 75 square feet would increase the total impervious cover at the site, at the Village Shopping Center, from 50.11 to 50.12. So we're talking a hundredth of a percent. And for the compact parking, so the parking code allows a maximum of 10% of all spaces to be designated as compact parking stalls. So with the approval of this plan, and because I believe most of the, the charging stalls are compact, they would be nine parking stalls over the maximum allowed by the code. The shopping center as a whole is still, the, the total number of parking spots is, is over the minimum, you know, the minimum required. So it's still, there's still plenty of parking spots for the, for the shopping center as a whole. This would just be an additional nine parking stalls that are specifically designated as compact. I did, Councilmember Rosengarden had a question regarding where the, the EV Go charging stations will be located. So here's the Village Shopping Center, just to orient you. So here's Home Depot Boulevard, here's World Market, let me blow this up. And so currently, there are, this map is a little old. So there are Tesla charging stations on this top corner of the, the parking lot. That would be the, that would be the, the west corner of that, of that parking lot. So the EV Go will be along this, the east part of the, the parking lot. So basically, there's an entrance here to the shopping center, an artery onto Brody Lane, and so it would, these charging stations would face Orange Theory Fitness. So basically, this entire row will be charging stations. One half is Tesla. And by the way, so the Tesla charging stations were permitted by the city, they did not require variance, unlike the EV Go. So, and then, so this whole row will be charging stations, so. And the city engineers here, if you have any questions, and the applicants here, if you have questions, so.
Mayor Pretend?
So it seems like the Tesla, Tesla one didn't need a variance because they probably just used a parking spot?
Correct.
Because they had enough spaces.
Yeah, and the, and as I, because I actually drove over there today, there were three Teslas charging. The Tesla station is actually built onto the existing like sidewalk area. So it didn't require any additional pads or anything. So I guess it's just possibly is just the difference in design of the EV Go. But yeah, but in review of, you know, staff found, okay, this is adding impervious cover.
And so all of those spots on the north part of that little parking lot will be charging spaces now?
Correct. By the time, because the EV Go plans, I'm sorry, hang on. So the EV Go, so yeah, the EV Go doesn't, they don't, I guess they don't show, but yes, this entire row. So EV Go will be right here, and I believe the Tesla starts...
Right.
I don't know, practically the entire row right there will be charging stations.
So the, the one part of the, the B part of the variance, I'm completely fine with that. And, you know, I'll probably wrap my brain around this, 75 square feet of extra. It's just, you know, chipping away, chipping away at that, you know, we're already at 50% and I know, that, that's probably one of the better impervious covers for the shopping stations, right?
Definitely better than market fair.
Yeah.
Homestead, do you know, is it around, if you had to just, what is Homestead's impervious cover? Is it 50?
They're probably between 40 and 50.
Between 40.
Yeah, I think I remember 45.
Yeah.
Definitely better, it's definitely less than market fair.
Definitely less.
Yeah.
And then the last, just as, also as a reference, the last variance granted was the rear of the shopping center to add a little bit more sidewalk.
Sephora, right?
For Sephora.
Yeah, that, I am...
And that was a little bit more...
Regurgitating going away with it, like, one day I will snap and just say, no, but, you know, I'm, I get it, and it's, it could be much worse things than like, you know, EV charging stations. So I think that's all I have, but I'll let my colleagues go.
Councilor Medicas?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to go first?
Oh, I just, can you, where is the additional impervious cover?
Go to the plan.
North of the...
So back to the, and the other concern I had about, I asked Matt this earlier, but I didn't realize that the ones that Tesla put in are only for Teslas. And so I wanted, I wanted to make sure that any electrical car could, could charge here because I don't want to see a lot more put in for one kind of vehicle when there's going to be all kinds of electrical vehicles. So where is the impervious cover taken?
Do you want to put it there?
No, you can see it on this one, it's in dark areas, basically.
Oh, it's going up into the, the grass area?
It's going into the grass area on the backside of the parking stops, basically. It's where those areas are going to be. They have to put in a transformer and stuff to get the charging stations operational.
Is that what the big one is, the transformer?
That's a transformer, 30 by 30 or so.
Hi there, my name is Stephen Osborne, I'm the general contractor with DF Osborne Construction, and I represent EV Go on this project. And to answer your question, ma'am, yes, the, each of the charging pedestals are placed on a concrete pad that's roughly three foot by four foot in size, looking straight down at it. These are engineered for future proofing. They are very heavy-duty pads, they can be pulled out easily if the site is ever removed, but if the site ever needs to be upgraded, we already have a nice deep pad right there. So we don't have to expand a year down the road if the equipment gets a little bit bigger. There is cross-compatibility with EV Go systems across multiple vehicle types. So this is actually a really incredible addition to this site here that virtually anybody can charge at these chargers right here. But as you can see, really minimal, about 75 square feet total of impervious area that we're adding, very, very small impact to the area.
So you're not paving any additional space? It's the pads that you're putting in that's taking up the...
No, ma'am. We would, we would be straightening the curb a little bit there. You can see how the curb is darkened right on the edge. We would straighten that up just a little bit, make it easier for cars to enter and exit the stalls. But otherwise, nope, there's the six small pads. There's, there's two large dispenser pads on the right side, and I want to say those are about four foot by five foot. And then there's four smaller pads that are about three foot by four foot. There's a long stretch of an equipment pad, we call it, that has a electrical switchgear and power cabinets that converts it from AC to DC for the DC fast charge. So cars can charge at these in a matter of minutes rather than hours. My wife has an electric hybrid van, it takes hours and hours to charge at home. These, minutes. And then, of course, you have your transformer on the far left there, the utility transformer. And I don't have the spec on that in front of me, but those are usually about a seven foot by eight foot pad. So altogether, very small impact. Everything around this would be restored with grass or sod, whatever matches the area there based on the city or site host requirements.
One last question.
Yes, ma'am.
What happens when the power goes out? Is there a backup system, battery backup in these?
I don't believe there's a battery backup on this system here. That is something that could be added in the future, and we have done that on other sites. This one is not designed for battery backup, so if power goes out, I think we're just stuck for a little bit.
So how do, so how does electricity get paid for?
The EV Go, my client, they have agreements with site hosts, and so I'm, I'm not sure on this one specifically since I'm just the general contractor, but of course, it's all passed through to the end user, but either EV Go or the site host would pay depending on who owns it, or if, if there's any sort of state funding, there may be a, there may be some shared expense there. I'm sorry, I can't comment on that one.
Oh, that's okay. A little too deep, thank you.
Okay, I think we had Councilmember Young and then Councilmember Rosengarden.
You asked most of the questions I was going to ask, so thank you. I did it, one, just strictly out of curiosity, which is, are there incentives for the property managers to install these?
By, and what do you mean by incentives? Are there like...
Tax breaks, subsidies, anything like that?
Not through, not for the city, you know, not for the city.
No, I meant, I meant for the property manager, not for the city.
For the property man, oh, yeah.
Of the, of the...
So the, you know, the village, I would think, you know, that, and in discussion with the, in our last meeting with the Village Shopping Center manager, Cindy Lussard, so she kind of asked how this was going, and I told her that there would need to be a variance and, you know, and just in our discussion, you know, I think it's a benefit to both the shopping center and the city because it draws people to the shopping center and they stay and they park their car well, and then ideally go shopping and/or eat while.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's a great idea. I'm particularly glad to see that it is a universal charger.
Yes.
Not a Tesla charger.
Yeah, because we have, this is, we have two, now we have two, so there's the Tesla and the Village here, and then there's a plan Tesla going in at Homestead.
I'm just wondering what drove the shopping center to want to do this, really?
Right. So I, I can briefly speak to that.
Okay.
And I don't want to get above my pay grade and get in trouble with my client here, but I can tell you, my client is very aggressive about expanding a large network for EV charging. The executive team is very well-aligned with the national team on the infrastructure bill as far as getting EV chargers installed. We've been putting these in, my company alone has been installing these in about 30 states, and there are several other contractors doing the same thing. So my client reaches out to site hosts and finds facilities. As far as state funding, I'm not sure, I'm not able to really comment on that. But the one thing I can say that I'm very proud of to represent this company is that EV Go has by far the best uptime on their chargers across the country. They are committed to, I believe it's a 98% uptime, and I don't think anyone's even close to that in double digits. So as far as reliability, we can't control if the power goes out in the area, but we can control if the systems are being maintained and taken care of. And that goes all the way down to the landscaping. They take very, very good care of these sites. So I'm, I'm, I'm very proud, I've, I've built multiple different brands, Tesla, Electrify America, ChargePoint, EV Go. We're very proud of EV Go because they take very good care of their product.
Thank you, it's good information.
Councilor Rosengarden, did you want to speak?
I was, I was just going to say, I thought that it was going to take a while for them to charge their cars, thus the longer it takes, they're in our shopping centers longer.
Well, and there are different sizes. There's 100 kilowatt chargers and there's 350 kilowatt chargers, and it depends on the car that you bring. So you can charge in a matter of minutes and be on your way, or it could take 30 or 40 minutes depending on the car and depending on the size of charger, and of course, the rates vary. But it definitely does help with the sales tax revenues in the local area, yep.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out on, on the plan, and the Public Works Director and City Engineer confirmed, so in, in order to kind of mitigate the additional impervious cover and, and execute this plan, so the curb, so this parking stall was kind of removed and the curb has been extended, so this will be additional, you know, landscaping added to that landscaping island. So I believe that helped kind of offset everything.
Can we label that the Rob Johnson Memorial Landscape?
Right, the Rob Johnson Memorial.
Plot.
Yeah.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I'll give it a shot. Yeah, here we go. So I move we act on the following variance request by Blimer Engineers for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations at 5601 Brody Lane. Do I need one for each, or?
Can, you can do, the motion can include an approval of variance to section, you can do both in the same motion.
Okay. Include variance to Section 150.332 for... Okay. Include variance to Section 150.332 for additional 75 square feet of impervious cover, and a variance to Section 150.588 for nine additional compact parking stalls.
And just based on the findings, so that, that
Approval based on the findings.
You are agreeing based on the findings presented by the applicant?
Five findings.
Sorry?
Based on the five.
Based on the findings. Just going to add that to every single thing.
Well, only for the watershed, but yes.
Just make a template and use it.
All right. So we got a motion. We have a motion to approve the variance requests by Blimer Engineers for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations at 5601 Brody Lane, including a variance to Section 150.332 for additional 75 feet of square impervious cover, and variance for Section, to Section 150.588 for nine additional compact parking stalls, based on the findings. And do we have a second for that?
Second.
Councilmember Reitz, second? Or, sorry, Councilmember Metticus, seconds? Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, the motion is approved, and the variances. So thank you for, the applicant for coming and presenting, and thanks to your staff for putting the material together. Counsel, we are out of agenda items, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. With findings.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Okay. A motion to adjourn from Councilmember Metticus, is there a second? Councilmember Young, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we adjourned at 8:25 PM.